I have photographs of them burning down the old farm.
Gabby.
Ms. Smith? You're muted. Here, can you hear me? Now again, Mr. Golevin?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Mr. Reggino?
Here.
Mr. Shultis?
He's here somewhere.
Sound of board of zoning.
Okay, this is the right.
Mr. Shultis?
Up there in the corner.
Oh, I hear him. And Chairman Porter?
Here. Okay, um, what we need to do first is to nominate Gabby as our secretary for the year 2021. So I'd like to nominate Gabby as our official secretary.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded? Who was seconding it? Can you hear me?
I did, Kevin.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi, Lois, how are you?
Fine, Kevin, thank you, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, it carried, and Gabby is our secretary.
Thank you.
We're all on board with that, right? There you are.
I'm back. I'm sorry, I have the worst connections here at my house, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. When we had these houses, we didn't build them to think we're gonna be doing this, right?
Poor area, our internet's always.
A second, uh, I'm, I'm, by the way, I'm temporary, I'm not permanent, I made that clear. I've, this is my third time being chairman, and I, I really don't want it to be my legacy when I die. That all they ever was was chairman. Well, I am fatalistic on some things. I am sixty-eight, so.
I have a great board, I really do, I think that we have a strong board and an intelligent board, and um, I think that uh, we'll be great together, seriously, no matter who's the chair.
I hope you, I would like to nominate Kevin Reggino for our vice chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You did say aye for yourself, yeah. We're carried through there.
Thank you, guys.
All right, now how about the minutes? We need the approval of the minutes. I'm giving a little extra time because I think we have communications issues.
I'm, I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Beautiful. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, uh, if you see me moving aside, I'm turning on my iPad, I have a lot of mail, I just use the iPad and the Mac. Um, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we open up the public hearing for Albany Seven LLC slash Dino Ritchie, Z three eight eight and Z three nine one on seven twenty-one, seven twenty-three Ulster Avenue.
I do know, I think. Cyril, it's your turn. How are you?
All right.
Shut off my speakers. Can you hear me?
Yeah. That was, that was a little bit frightening to my point of view.
Yeah, I know, I got the computer speakers on and my cellphone is on speaker. So you want me to share my screen and bring up the drawings?
Um, Gabby, if you could just read what we're doing here, that paragraph you sent us, then we'll get into your explanation, okay?
Um, what do you mean exactly, the, what I have on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm gonna read this, "Use variants to allow new construction of a new, with multiple apartments above a non-residential structure and an area balance, variants to allow a new construction to be twenty-four feet from the front property line and relief for required popping right, parking requirements, three parking spaces, relief for three parking spaces." How'd I do, Gabby?
You did well, but I had a missing word, it should be, "To allow new construction of a new building with multiple apartments," I apologize.
Always leave it up to professionals to do this stuff. Okay, okay, sir.
Okay, can you hear me? I need to bring up my uh, screen. Okay, so are these your drawings, Gabby? Let me bring up mine. Okay, so um, so this is the.
Pull up the last one I have, if you would like me to.
I got all mine on the screen here, it's okay, it's up, it's up to you, just scroll through what I have here, if that's okay with you.
Yep, that's fine, you just have to share your screen because we don't see anything quite yet.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
You guys got the stuff in email that if you have to refer to, are you okay with that? The PDFs? Okay, whoa, I'm used to that, hello.
There you go.
Who did that, Gab?
See this? Can you see this now?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, so, so, so here's the uh, the site plan. SP one, which is basically the total site plan, copy of the survey over here, parcel map, area map, street view, dumpster enclosure, you've all seen this before. Uh, next page is the landscaping plan, so we've got details from the water department, uh, a landscaping list, detail of the landscaping, and what I did was I sort of separated the layers on my uh, drawing so that, so that we're looking at the site plan, then we're looking at the landscaping plan, and then the next one is going to be the lighting plan.
Yeah.
And we have a floor plan of the building. First floor, second floor, foundation plan, and then we have the four exterior views. Now, there was a discussion on, on uh, something that we could do for uh, this elevation that faces Albany Avenue, and uh, I added a couple of windows, and there's gonna be a sign here, and I'm gonna show you that sign.
I can't see that part, I'm sorry. Can you zoom in on it? Wait, where's the sign gonna be?
Right here, but I'm gonna try and bring up a s- a picture from the sign company.
Okay.
If I can find the right one.
It looks like a window.
That's not it.
On my eyes, so, pro whatever number it is.
So what they've done is um, I guess the name of the laundromat is going to be Clean and Go Express Laundromat, so it's two foot six inches tall and twelve feet wide, and it's going to go right on this, what's left of this blank wall. Uh, at the last meeting, this were, there were no windows and just a blank wall, so now we've added some windows to kind of break it up a little bit. I'm running this roof line, this overhang, I'm gonna run this roof line across, and at this point, it would only be like a foot of projection over here, it's about a five-foot projection, and then the, the sign right here, so that it would kind of like break up this, you know, this uh, solid wall.
Now, you mean, the sign is gonna be right on the building, correct?
It's gonna be mounted on the building, yes. Now, the, this, this part of the building, this area is twenty-four feet from the property line, front property line, this bigger part in the background is five feet or four feet further back, so this is twenty-nine feet from the uh, front yard setback, but we're asking for the twenty four feet, which is this.
And what about the side sign, the pre-existing sign that used to be there next to the sidewalk or over top of the sidewalk? Are you still gonna utilize?
Uh, his plan is to utilize that, his plan is to utilize this sign, which would allow people to look underneath the sign to see traffic coming down, you know, Ulster Avenue as they're exiting the site. This is what's there, existing, and this is the proposed new sign. Change ice cream in the back and the Clean and Go Laundromat in the front.
Warren.
Yes?
Is that all right that that sign stays there as a pre-existing? Because we wouldn't have proved it, he would have had to receive a variance for that sign had been there, but um, with everything going on in that area, and you trying to get everybody else trying to push back their things, or what about this sign? Does that fall under this umbrella of pre-existing approval?
Well, this came up at a planning board meeting, um, this particular portion of Ulster Avenue is not in the um, enhancement plan.
Right, the zone.
The, the zone, which only runs up East Chester Street and then all the way up to Angeles, so monument signs, we can enforce monument signs in this location, and as the previous depiction showed, monument sign would not work at this location.
Right.
So, pre-existing sign, um, I believe that this is the best op- option for this location, um, because the sightlines will still be there, and that's critical for the, the egress.
If they don't put another sign underneath it after everything is done. And, and I'm not saying that he's going to, I'm not saying that you're going to do that, I'm just looking down the road. There's another facility there, uh, the wine merchant, I do go there occasionally, and when even I travel out with my Jeep, even though it's so high up off the ground, I have to like crouch down to see underneath the sign as I'm exiting, and I just don't want to see another sign added like that to Albany Avenue. Could be a hazard later down.
Just have a question about that sign, do we have to do anything for a variance on that sign, or is it good, is it good to go?
No, the sign being pre-existing in the same location, he's actually cleaning it up, as you can see from the rendering on the left, um, and he's increasing the sight, the sightlines for, for egress. Um, so this, it's in the same location, it's the same size, basically just a refacing of it.
So that's not even gonna be part of our discussion on voting tonight, then? That's there, not even part of it, okay, just gonna make sure we didn't have to give another variance on that.
Well, it could be part of the discussion, not that we're voting on it.
No, I'm not saying you can't discuss it, we're not voting on it.
No, that, it's fine.
Yeah, that's cool.
Thanks, Warren.
She made a good point, because I live not too far from there, and I see people having a little hesitation pulling out of some of those stores, especially that wine merchant, because you really can't see around that thing. You know, it's one thing to pull in, it's another thing to pull out with a hassle.
Right.
It's, it's a little more difficult this way you go, but that's worth noting, worth noting.
Private.
That entire stretch is dangerous, but that's not.
You can see the sign.
This.
Thanks, Andy.
The next sign north, you can see, that presents a problem in itself.
Yeah, that's the flower store in um, Recall.
Yep.
Center for Accessible Living, which I've used a few times. Yeah, that's a tough one. Okay, anyone have, anyone have questions for the gentleman on just dealing with these two variances that we have here? Is a use variance, am I correct? Yes. And the twenty-four feet from proper design.
So the fire department is, said it's okay, the water department said it's all right, Frank said it's from the highway department, they're all on board with it, Vincent said yes, I think he covered its bases. I don't know.
As far as this board is concerned, he has, um, he, he'll need more detail when we go to planning uh, as a request from both the water department and the sewer department. But as far as this board is concerned, you know, the presentation meets the criteria thus far.
We're very limited to our activity with this project, just some visual things.
Right.
Anybody in the general public that would like to make a comment on this? I mean, I'm kind of like locked into a screen, I don't know where people are on these screens, so that's why when I ask, is there anybody out there who would like to make a comment on this?
You can take it off the share screen and see who's on the call.
Okay.
I can? Okay.
We're all so new with this, so bear with us.
You can always go back to the share screen if you need to, but then, then.
That's pretty, looks like something out of California.
There's a lot of stuff on that screen.
Boy. You can tell a busy mind by their desktop.
Yeah, let's uh, let's get off the shared screen, please.
Am I?
I'm not trying to. Click on something that looks interesting.
Good lord, this is turning into a disaster.
No, this is great, everybody's happy, it's so good.
Cyril, we still see your desktop, there we go.
All right.
I think we're all just glad that wasn't our desktop.
All right, so uh, we're at public comment now, right? That's where.
Right, I'm waiting for your second to the public. Is there anybody in the public to comment? One with the other. How about board members? You guys wanna make any more comments for the record?
I, I just want to ask one more question that, you know me, are people gonna be able to drive around the front of the building? Or is parking spots in the front? I think that part of.
They were, they were eliminated. What, the, what we're calling the front is actually the side, if you're standing on Albany Avenue looking at the, the building that faces Albany Avenue, and you dodge into the parking lot and look at the longer side of the building, that's what we're calling the front, there's glass, you know, storefront glass, stone veneer, multiple entrances into the laundromat and so on.
Okay, so are people gonna be able to drive around, we'll call this side of the building? Whatever Albany Avenue side is.
They cannot approach the building from the Albany Avenue side, only from the parking lot.
Okay, thanks.
Only thing on the Albany Avenue side is a sidewalk.
Sidewalk, yes.
Oh, good. People, probably Andy too, walk on that sidewalk daily, I mean, my cousins did all the time, my cousin Beverly still walks on it, but that's great.
You know, I, I still serve on the Complete Streets Advisory Council for the city of Kingston, and I'm all about walkability, and that corridor from McDonald's until you hit the firehouse and the vi-doc that, what we used to call the, the vi-doc when I was a kid, um, is, is so dangerous, there's no way for bicycles, pedestrians can't cross, uh, you know, uh, you don't want to hear my thoughts on that, and that's not for tonight, but. But I think getting in and out of Albany Avenue and that, or Ulster Avenue, and that parson, just getting across four lanes of traffic is, is hard, so I think making sure that sightlines are open, if we're gonna grant anything, has to be, you know, dealing with what we have on the docket and what's in place for our, our laws in place, we have to make sure sightlines are good.
Okay, so I would like to entertain a motion that we either accept this and pass this and grant the variances, or not. Who would like to make a motion?
Rob, can we close the public hearing?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we had to close the public hearing, I'm very sorry. Well, I'd like to motion we close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But before we come to a vote, can I just talk about what the, the county planning board m- comments were?
Mm-hmm.
Did any, you guys all read them, correct?
No, not Ian.
And I, I mean, like, I just want to talk about the use variance, and it was also about housing, I just want to be clear, are we granting a, a setbacks? Or are we also granting the variance for allowing housing in an area that's not housing and work? Can I just be clear on that?
Yes, Jason here?
Yes.
Jason, could you speak to that?
I believe it's, there is an area variance and a use variance that is being requested by the applicant, um, is that correct, Gabby?
There are two area variances, one for three parking space relief, one for the front setback relief, and then the use variance for the apartments.
Okay, so the use variance would be to allow him to have these apartments in a non-residential district.
Okay.
And it makes two spelling, yep.
And, and I'm, and I'm not gonna open a can of worms here, because, you know, but when I read these comments, who does it fall on? It falls on the planning board, am I correct? To, if we grant them this variance to allow them to do that, it's up to the planning board to put the restrictions for the, 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 the use, uh, to make a certain amount of them affordable or whatever, am I correct? That's not on our, our.
That is not.
Our.
That's not before this board right now, you're only allowing the use of, of apartments, it's up to the town board or the planning board if they so choose to restrict it to ten percent affordable housing, et cetera.
Perfect, I just want to make sure we're not lacking in having a conversation, that's all. Okay, great, good.
We'd like to make a motion on this, one way or the other.
Wait a minute.
I'll make a motion.
I want, it's three apartments, right? Wasn't it three apartments?
No, we had three parts.
Nine, nine total.
Sorry, okay.
I think, I, I think.
I apologize.
I think we should have two motions, one for the use and then one for the areas.
Okay, I agree.
We can split it that way, if there's any discussion later on about what you just brought up, Andy, then that'll be helpful. So, all right, let's start with the first one. Variance, um, for, I'm on the wrong page here, I'm on my thing, uh, area variance, I'd like to make a motion, we approve that.
For specific one?
Yeah, it's right in the, it's right in the, the measure.
These are for the setbacks and for eliminating three parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You could, you could explain your vote if you want to, it never hurts, believe that, it never hurts to put on record.
Uh, this should be a roll call vote.
Okay.
Uh, who seconded it?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Turklevin?
You know what, I, as much as I love this project, I think I'm not gonna say yes on the setback, because I feel like we really need to start clamping down on, on making sure that this is a safe way to, to move back and forth, you know, to, to, to move in and out of a very busy corridor. Thank you, so my vote would be no.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis? Chairman Porter?
Um, I'm gonna vote yes, and dealing with other issues such as what Andy brought up is really in the purview of the town board to come up, dress out of the planning board. Uh, we don't have a plan for that, so we just, the zoning board just can't make one up, and, and so they have to come up with a plan, what they want to do with that area, how they want to do it, and in the comprehensive plan, there's recommendations to have a trap, to study this area for traffic flow, and all the other issues that, it's up to the board. So I, I'm voting yes, okay, but I want you to know, it's not about the traffic, I don't see to be a problem in the area, in fact, it's probably an improvement for the area.
The sidewalk's still gonna be existing, uh, pertaining, referring to his draw, they're still gonna have a, a large sidewalk for the residents to enjoy walking in that area.
Or quickly jog it between cars. But you're right, it's, it's all, there's no change to that.
Very, it's uh.
You're right.
They're enjoying in the morning, there's people that walk on that sidewalk late at night that are walking from the big box stores, there's always somebody in that area, so, with Andy on that about the safety of it, but.
All right, that's the cut, we have one more to go with this, but you're right, I think the board has to be informed that maybe they should take a good look at this and come up with a plan, don't expect zoning board to come up with it. Not the.
Exactly, I'm happy to see it passed, I just, I had to.
Right.
I, yeah, good.
Okay, now we have a second, this issue, and it's the one with, I had to press this button, I just didn't keep shutting off from there, and that's the one we're gonna be dealing with, the uh, use variance. Where we'll be having the residential on top of a commercial structure.
Nine.
My apartments, one of them being handicapped with a ramp. So I'm calling for a vote on that. Should we pass it on?
Motion first, please.
You need a motion.
We pass it on, make a motion out there.
I'll make a motion, this is Andy.
Kevin, you want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Turklevin?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultis? Chairman Porter?
Yes, it hits everything we need in the town, we have a new business, businesses coming in, we have places that people can live affordably.
Exactly.
Good area next to buses, I mean, you know, it's a definite improvement in that section, we should do more of that.
Ice cream.
And ice cream.
Andy, do you remember Stuart's being there with those little tables and those pretty little chairs when we were little kids? I remember Stuart's.
Well, I remember Perky Milk, which is over by the, uh, which is where Subway is.
Subway, Subway used to be Stuart.
It was Perky, Perky Milk.
Milk?
We leave the ball through the bicycles and then go through, okay, thank you very much, we got the.
Question before we move on, do you mind?
Sit it out.
Well, it's in reference to the sign, Jake.
You might want to get with Warren on that, because there's really not much we could do with the signs grandfathered in.
Is there any way we can be sure that they're not gonna add anything on the lower part of this, so that does come in hazard?
That would be a question for Jason, let's tackle.
If, if there's gonna be any change to the sign, they would have to go back to the building department, and if there's a variance needed, or the building department feels that this is part of site plan, it would be referred to you to this board or to the planning board.
Thank you.
Well, that's a good answer, they have to come for us for a variance then.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have some preliminary hearings here. Vincent Argatini, Z three nine four. Gabby, are they here?
I'm here.
There you are, I did see you earlier, okay.
Oh.
What happened? There we go.
I need a coffee.
I left, I left the meeting.
All right, you want to explain what you want to do there, sir?
Yeah, I, we, uh, variance for a mobile home, out of a mobile home park in an R ten zone. Aye.
Jeez.
We'd like to put a, it's a double-wide mobile home, and we're gonna put it on a full foundation. I, my son, my son wants to put it there, him and his friend just had a baby, they're at.
Congratulations.
Aw, congratulations.
Congratulations, baby.
Grandma and grandpa.
Yeah, grandma and grandpa. Last night at eleven o'clock, they're still in the hospital, that's why my son is here right now.
I did read that on the application that they wanted to get this done so they had the baby.
Yeah, they need, they need a place to go, but uh, we're gonna put the double-wide on a full foundation, uh, it's got vinyl siding, a five-twelve pitch roof, uh, it's not gonna be a typical mobile home where you can move around, uh, you know, uh, it's, we tried to improve the area up there, my father bought it, uh, knocked down trailers that were there, I'm not sure if anybody knows what it did look like up there.
I do.
Before he bought it.
Yes, I remember.
Still on Google Maps, you can still see it.
Yeah, it was terrible looking spot, cleaned it all up, a lot of loads of garbage to the dump, we demoed that old trailer that were there, uh, we put in a brand-new sewer line, a brand-new water line, uh, you know, it's gonna be all graded off at the end and landscaped and uh, that's what we're, would like to do, you know?
I was by there the other day, I think it was on two, uh, Monday, and those machines were going full-time, spreading the dirt out and leveling the thing.
Yeah, trying to get it done, uh, for, oh, yeah. You know, please.
I do have a question, there was one map sent to us that made it look like it was gonna, you're gonna put a trailer park up there, I'm sorry, I gotta use the right word, manufactured home park up there.
No, I, my father bought it and uh, made four lots out of it, for his family, for the grandkids, and uh, my son is the only one that's building at this point, the other three lots, uh, we're not sure what they're gonna do, you know, the grandkids are welcome to them. Uh, if they're gonna build a house, if they're gonna put a modular, nobody knows, uh, nobody even knows if anybody will ever build on them, but my son is the only one right now that needs a place to go. Yeah.
And there were already trailers on the property, right?
Yeah, two old dumpy trailers.
Right.
Yeah.
No sewer in them, it was terrible, they're full of garb, you know?
Yeah, this, it's, yeah.
It was terrible, yeah.
Total improvement.
Yeah, oh, total improvement.
Yeah, it's definitely gonna be an improvement to what there was.
Yeah, brand-new water line, brand-new sewer line, it's gonna be. Yeah, brand new water line, brand new sewer line. It's gonna be all graded off, you know? I mean, we've been picking up garbage. Every time we work there, we pick up more garbage and bring it to the dump stuff that's laying around, you know? It's, it's, uh, it's definitely gonna be an improvement. You know, it's right in my neighborhood. I mean, I ride by it every day, so I don't want.
Yeah, you're down at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
The, uh, the Google, the Google, uh, the Google photo of, of the land when you pass by, it has those people in the pool. You should take a look. It's pretty funny. If anybody's seen it.
I hate to think that was a shower, but there's, there's that no sewer.
Did you see it? It was funny.
I don't wanna touch that. Yeah, I have a picture of your building. Um, I think your wife sent us.
Yeah.
Pretty nice. I wouldn't even know it's a, it's a, it's a double wide the way it's built.
Yeah. Yeah, it's sheet rock inside, you know, vinyl siding on the outside, a five twelve pitch roof and we're putting it on a full foundation, uh, concrete foundation, eight foot deep foundation and everything, so he's gonna, you know, he really needs a spot to go and he's gonna make it nice, you know, to be.
Yeah, that, that picture's really nice. It, it seems like they're, they're starting to blur the lines between a modular and a, and a trailer, right? Because that looks like, uh.
Yeah, we had to have a special frame built underneath the, you know, the, the unit, just so they could set it on the foundation.
Right.
Now it's, uh, it's gonna be nice for my home.
Looks nice.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Shultes, do you have any questions? Okay. I didn't hear anything.
I think he's muted.
Oh. He's trying to have you join the crowd.
Yeah, his audio's very low.
That's, uh, well, we didn't plan on this.
Nope, now you're muted.
I hear something.
So does this have to go to a public hearing now? Is that what we have to do?
What?
Yes.
Getting gross. I feel like I ain't cut it enough. It's a regression.
Looks good.
I mean, if anyone doesn't have any objections or does, this is a good time to say yes or no to public hearing.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we move to a public hearing.
A second.
Yeah.
All right.
Congratulations, Allison. Congratulations, Vinnie.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and you didn't tell us his name, the baby's name.
Didn't show us a picture either.
A little girl, yeah, Oakland Rose.
Oh, that's.
Oakland Rose?
She's.
Oakland Raiders.
Raiders fans? That's a beautiful name. That's a beautiful.
Could you call, call the roll, please, before we go into a spirit of.
I know, we're all like the babies. Forget about the, the home shows.
I love it. He'll send you pictures.
Yeah, right. I can't wait.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turkleven?
Yes.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultes? Okay, so I'm mouth yes. And Chairman Porter?
Uh, yeah, it's, it looks really nice. Welcome on the neighborhood.
I, I do have something to add, though.
Thank you.
The, um, the applicant will also need at least two area variances, if not three. I don't know the lot size. I don't know which lot he's putting it on. Um, there are other criterias involved with placing the, you know, placing a manufactured home out of a mobile home, out of a manufactured home park.
Okay.
And I think that was circulated around. Gabby will tell me.
Setbacks.
Um, there's lot size, there's road frontage, and there's setback.
Okay.
If it were, if it were a stick-built house, would it have to get a variance or is it just because it would be a mobile home?
Just because it's, it's a manufactured home. Of course, if it were stick-built, it would not require that. It's in our, it's, uh, it's in our town code.
It's the town. Not, yeah.
Okay, good to know, good to know. That we will know. Thank you.
But this, I, I have to tell you, this state pro-pro, um, approving is so dead. Anyway, especially something like this, great, but I understand, Warren. I'm not saying what you're saying is incorrect.
Oh, notice that the state is adamant, the state is adamant about affordable housing. Um, my previous jurisdiction, they tried to outlaw, um, manufactured homes and they got shut down overnight. So it's not that they're against it. They just want, it's, it's not to outlaw them. They wanna regulate them.
No. I was saying, pro, the last training I was at, the woman that did the training, they were pro trailer parts and pro. Yeah, it was something different to me to hear that because I'm used to hearing what you just said. So it's quite taken back by that.
But if you look at, if you look and see the, the difference of, uh, how, how container living and modular living and things like that have changed and, um, housing and mini housing and stuff like that has changed in the dynamic, especially clustering, cluster housing, when you look at urban green footprints. That's not for our, under our purview, but I think as they look forward, that's how they're gonna wind up regulating things moving forward. Hoping to encourage that kind of a concept.
Minimize footprint and, uh, population too is, uh, expanding, so.
Well, actually, actually, they passed a code, they passed a code for tiny houses now. So, up until, uh, May of this year, tiny houses were not allowed in New York State. So they are getting on board.
I, I have a procedural question dealing with this. If we're looking at potentially two to three more variances, are we moving ahead when we should move ahead? In other words, should that, should those variances be addressed at the same time as a package?
There'll be area variances which do not require a public hearing.
Okay.
So we can, we can modify the application. Jason will weigh in, I'm sure.
It looks like he's, he's going to.
But it, it, it can, that, that one can be addressed at the next meeting during, after, I should say, after the public hearing.
Jason, what's your opinion on this?
Yeah, the area variance does require a public hearing, but if the applicant can get, uh, some specifications for the next meeting, I think we can put all of it together into one, um, one or two motions.
Okay.
Right, cuz they only need to mention that there's gonna be an area setback when they send out their letter to the neighbors, correct? They don't have to be specific.
Ideally, it should be specific, but I, we have in the past, um, modified the request, uh, at the public hearing or at the close of the public hearing.
I am pretty specific when I sent out the public hearing notices.
But I would think just figuring out that setback is only like a day and taking out measuring tape and figuring it out, so it's not like it's rocket science here.
No, I can meet with Vinnie on site and we can figure out exactly what he's requesting. That, that's not a problem.
It's not like they don't understand what like excavating and landscaping and stuff is all that about or anything. It's n- nothing like that.
Oh, they've never done that before.
No, no, they've never, they've never moved a piece of dirt in their life, no.
I only brought, I have a feeling that within the next by the next meeting, this, this project will have concrete ready to pour that next morning at six o'clock in the morning.
Machine sitting there right now, ready to dig back.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna say yes and also we gotta say, whoa, hold on a minute, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be that inefficient. But we, so in other words, your feeling, Jason, is we can say yes, public hearing and address those issues so this family can get their house together, all of the new children, correct?
Yes, yes, I agree.
Thank you very much.
And get that baby.
Don't let her stop a baby, please.
Thank you.
Okay.
First of all, I can't believe Allison's a grandmother, so I have to get beyond that.
I can't either.
Al, I just like, you were like a little sixteen-year-old working at the board office. I just can't, I can't, I can't go there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move ahead to the next one. Keith Hughes, Z three nine five.
How he's doing?
I'm doing fine.
I'm not gonna ball. I mean, this, this beats a gong show, um.
A gong show?
Yeah, I think myself. I need to get that off my screen, Mr. Uh.
The one that's up on the screen right now, that's mine.
Oh, thank you. Okay, then you can take.
Okay, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Gabby threw that up a long time ago.
Yes, I did.
Okay, I'd like to go back to the other screen we had.
Oh, uh, me and my wife were proposing. I'm sure everybody that's on, uh, the Zoom meeting knows the mushroom plant. Anybody that doesn't?
I just found one of their old original cookbooks.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, um.
All right.
The, uh, mushroom plant has been vacant for the last five years. It's been on the market. Um, I basically can't give it away because there's a lot of structural problems with it even before I bought it. So, uh, me and my wife decided that we want to take down the mushroom plant. Um, one of the biggest benefits for the town is, you guys were talking earlier about the corridor coming in. Well, this mushroom plant is the, one of the first things you see coming into town of Austin. So just taking it down is gonna beautify the property. So we would like to put a W, double wide on the property. Uh, offsets are just tremendous all the way around the whole building. Uh, again, like, uh, Vinnie and, uh, his wife was talking about these these double wides, they're not double wides. This, this double wide is all sheet rock. Uh, we are going with three twelve inch because there's almost twelve thousand dollars difference. Unfortunately, I don't have as much money as Vinnie, so, uh, I have to, I have to cut it down a little bit.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm just busting chaps. I love Vinnie. So, um, anyway, uh, on, on the, the picture that you see, uh, we were going around a little bit about the size that we're going with. Uh, it's actually, uh, we changed it up since I put the application in. Um, and we're gonna go a little bit bigger and a little bit shorter with times length, but as of right now, um, we have waiting to order it. It's gonna be a
Twenty-six by eight by sixty.
It's by sixty, twenty-six by eight by sixty, not sixty-four. So it's a little bit smaller square footage than, uh, what's on there. Yeah, so Gab, Gabby changed it for us, but.
We had the thirty-two, but we switched it down to the twenty-six, twenty-eight again.
Yeah, cuz it saved us eighteen thousand dollars by going down to twenty-six.
Okay, we could switch it again.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's all about the money, so. So, uh, we're gonna go with the twenty-six by sixty. Uh, and it's all sheet rock inside, has a cable end on it. Um, the Route nine W, uh, the front's gonna be facing Route nine W. We're not sure where the road gonna go into, but we're gonna landscape the whole thing, um, with trees and, you know, blacktop down to the thing, so it's really gonna unify border coming into, um, into the town on, on that part. We are putting it on slab, okay? Um, but we're also gonna put a, uh, eight block wall underneath the, uh, thing so it sits on. They're, the company's gonna take the, it's never gonna move cuz they're taking the axles. Um, cheaper for them to take the axles. They save money, so, um, that's what we're planning on doing.
Are you? Are you selling it? Are you doing it to, uh, are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we're, we're, we're planning on moving in, me and my wife. Uh, I don't want us to sit there and say it's our last house cuz that sounds wrong, but.
But it is.
But it is. So, um, we are, we live, we live up in Glasgow right now and the house is for sale. Um, it's just, we're waiting for the final notes from the bank to put it up on, uh, on sale. Um, and we plan on moving in here, so, you know, we're not doing it to rent it out. We're planning on it for it to be our final home. So, um, and then the kids can fight, fight over it after that.
We have attorneys.
We, one, right, Jay?
What's that?
I said, we know some good ones, right, Jason?
It's amazing sometimes, so, yeah, this, this is gonna be our, uh, last home. We're gonna live there. Um, I try to take, uh, you know, cutting the grass and everything like that. I try to take pride into the home, so, uh, it's really gonna look good. Um, yeah, actually, I thought it was gonna sit lower because if anybody knows the area, it sits low.
And too, that it sits down so low, the mushroom factory. I recall being able to see the top of the building kind of grown over.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh,
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's really, uh, you know, when, you can't really, it's hard to picture, uh, um, home being there with the mushroom plant there. But, um, it, it's actually, we're gonna set it onto the one corner of where the backside of the building is. Um, so our, our offsets, as you can see that I wrote there, uh, basically it's gonna be a hundred and six feet from the property line in the front, a hundred forty-seven and a half from the back. Um, from the south side going north on the property line, that's almost two hundred and sixty, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty feet from where the, uh, the offset of the property line is.
Are you?
Got a nice yard.
Yeah.
Sorry. There's equipment there now. Is that your equipment or is that Dave's equipment? Uh, there's a lot of storage stuff.
Did you say Dave's? Did you say?
Well, that was a big mistake. That was a big mistake.
Young lady. Young lady.
You know, it's the right East Chester Street bypass.
Okay, folks, what, what do you, have any more questions?
That's not what I'm saying. There was a lot of equipment there and I.
Yeah, that, that's actually sitting on another piece of property.
Okay, so that's what I want to know. And yes, it was Dave's, right? I mean, I wasn't totally off an hour.
No, it's not, it's not.
No.
I don't care. It's okay. It's all right. I, I.
No, what else? Make a motion to go to a public hearing with this or not. That would be nice, too.
What's that?
Make a motion to go to a public hearing or not.
Um, I'll second that motion. Cuz, uh, really what we're, what we're voting on is just what? Uh, use variance, right?
Right.
Right, so it's just from taking it from a commercial and just.
Is it OEM? Gabby, I don't have the thing, the application in front of me to res.
It's highway commercial, mobile home is not allowed anywhere except our sixth year, I believe it was OM, by right.
So that's the variance that we're.
Without town board approval, I should say.
So, so that's not really a residential area at all?
Right, there's stores.
It's highway commercial.
Highway commercial, but there are houses around, especially up on the other side, like by Belvedere and stuff like that.
Yeah, well, there, there's a house, the next, uh, the next piece of land right next to us on the north side of, if you look at the map, there's a house right there.
Little house.
Yeah, little house that sits in the hole.
Oh, no, the nice people live there. Night when I was, uh, really young and they were the nicest people. I remember using their phone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
I'm ready to call for the vote. I'm good for that.
We had a second on this, so let's call for the vote on this.
Yep. Uh, do you need a roll or I'm all, I'm in favor?
Roll, then we're all on, on the same page.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turkleven?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Reggino?
Yes.
Mr. Shultes?
Yes.
Chairman Porter?
Yes.
I think, uh, I think a house, a nice house there would definitely improve that area tremendously. Um, I, 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 uh, I think we'd have to know a little bit more about, uh, what the rules are, right? With the, with the, being a highway commercial. But.
Okay, he doesn't, he doesn't require variances that, uh, Mr. Argantini does, uh, due to the fact that he has the road frontage. He also has the lot size met. I might also mention that there is a manufactured home to the south. Um, one other lot down, so there is already one on the road on the same side.
Okay.
Thank you, Warren.
Is Keith?
Keith, did you trace a credit card to draw the mobile home? I have to ask.
Say that, say that again? Did you use a credit card?
Trace around a credit card? Trace around a credit card to do the mobile home.
I, I actually think it was a business card.
Okay, I knew it was something.
Okay.
Is chair, what's going on here?
I'm not an artist, okay?
How did you?
I know I make out trees, that's it.
Warren, how did you know that? The rounded corners?
Yeah.
Yes, I did.
Thanks, Warren. Just, we want to put up a blowy man there too, Warren. Do we have, have a site plan for that?
You, you know what's going to happen if you do.
Okay.
Okay, I'll be there. Something here. All right. Um, Chairman Ring is the chairman of the planning board, wanted to address us tonight. I don't know if he's here. Folks, you, you're all cool.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Fuck to both of you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you.
There he, no, that's not him.
Jason, hi, Jay.
He wanted to bring up the point that there was a digital sign law that's all drawn up, ready to go. He wants to encourage the board to pass it. He wanted to address us tonight to see if we would explain it to us. And I thought we then would be able to do a memorializing resolution, saying, yes, this makes sense. We need to have this in the town with the way the signs are going, but I can see him there and I don't want to talk, I don't want to speak on his behalf because I don't know what the legislation looks like.
So, um, Bob, the, uh, I, what I can do is I can tell Jeffrey that the town board will start the local law process for the digital sign law.
Okay.
And there will be a town board public hearing. The town board can, uh, refer the law to both the planning board and to this board.
Okay.
For its review and recommendation. Um, it's a pretty good law. We worked on it a couple of years ago and it allowed for digital signs to be freely allowed in the town, in commercial districts with certain regulations and restrictions. So, uh, i- it's desperately needed. We have a lot more digital signs, electronic signs than we had ten years ago. And, um, it just wasn't adopted. It, it, it wasn't the follow-through that we needed two years ago, but Jeffrey is very, um, adamant that, you know, that we have some sort of law on books. So, uh, we'll start that process and maybe next month we can review it.
Excellent. Uh, just a little background history. The first digital sign was the fire department. And they came before us because they were informed it was illegal to have a digital sign with motion across their, on a state road or any road. And at that time, so we basically came up with a number, you know? Motion can move every ten seconds, you can refresh the screen, but before that, a little guy running with a hose with fireworks going on constantly. Yeah, so I, I would like to see what they come up with. All right, so that's for another month. All right, cool. I, I don't have anything else. I can't think of anything. entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Boy, I would have jumped on that one. Ah, yes, I.
Aye.
To adjourn? Okay, cool. They're in, they're in there. Oh, yes, there was one thing. We were adjourned. It was that new business, we were going to have like a training module. We were planning for February. We did this a few years ago. It was excellent. You know, we had it for the planning board and the zoning board and Jason and, uh, Jeffrey conducted it. So I asked him if we considered doing it again in February some point in time. Brings us all on the same page and we know the direction we're going with and it counts for hours for training, too.
But wait, anybody ask Jason about this?
Yes, yes, yes. Bob did ask me.
He has a, he has a poker face.
Let's, um, you know, let's work out a couple of dates and, uh, maybe in February we can get this done.
Why don't you let us know what dates you're available? I mean, you're on, you're busy planning board, town board.
Sure, yeah.
You know, that's fair. I, I think whatever you choose.
That's kind of where we left it, as well as Jeffrey would decide what he's got available. They would work it out. Just giving you a little heads up, we're going to try to do this in February. Whenever it comes out, you know, but again, it's, it's, it's hours of our training and it was really beneficial. Answered a few questions. I've been on this board for a long time that I had. So it doesn't hurt to take it again. We're going to do it with the Zoom and hopefully I'm not the one that's going to be pressing the buttons.
Jason, do you see us going back in after everything in the vaccines all take effect? Um, do you foresee us coming back into the town hall? I mean, I, I'm fine with this Zoom. Please don't take it that way. I'm not challenging anything. I'm just asking out of curiosity. We may be home again in March possibly?
I think we're going to be doing Zoom for the first half of this year.
I'm happy to hear.
That's my guess.
My husband just got his vaccination tonight at seven o'clock.
Oh.
He just got his. I'm so jealous.
You're too young.
That arm.
No, I'm, I'm six, I'll be sixty-five in it, in April, so. I'm waiting.
Fantastic. Wow, that walking's good. Anyway.
Well, thank everybody for coming. It's been a little bit of fun, more than usual. That's okay. At least this time we could, we could take a laugh here. We need it.
You did good.
Everybody, God bless, be safe.
Bye, guys.
Bye.
Have a good night.
See you.
Bye.